Let’s be for this wonderful morning given us, Lord, to come together in your presence, Lord, to give you glory, to give you honor, to give you praise, Lord. As we learn from your word, Lord, whatever we learn, Lord, let it be a blessing for us, Lord. Let it speak to our hearts, Lord God. Let it transform our hearts, Lord God. You deserve all the glory, honor and praise. Bring your people together, Lord. In Jesus Christ’s name we pray. Amen. So we looked at verses 3 to 5 from Colossians, chapter 1, last week. We studied about how their faith in Jesus Christ transformed them and the love which they had for all the saints. And the love and faith that they expressed was based upon the hope that is laid up for them in heaven. And it applies to every one of us. The love that we express for our fellow saints and the faith that we have in Jesus Christ is based on only one thing, and that is the hope that is laid up for us in heaven, the inheritance, as we heard yesterday, that is laid up for us in heaven. And in verse 5, it concludes, “Which you have previously heard in the word of truth, the gospel.” So the gospel is given a definition there in verse 5, which is the word of truth. And that’s where we stopped. And today, we’re going to look at that word, the gospel. So what is the gospel? What does Paul mean by the word gospel? Last week, we looked at Ephesians 1, verses 13, where Paul talks about the gospel in him. You also, after listening to the message of the truth, the gospel of your salvation, having also believed, you were sealed in him with the Holy Spirit of promise. So he’s talking about the gospel of salvation here in this context of Ephesians. When he talks to the church of Ephesus, he says, “The gospel of your salvation.” We looked a little bit about it. And in 2 Corinthians, chapter 6, verses 7, we see the same phrase, “The word of truth,” where Paul says, “In the word of truth, in the power of God, by the weapons of righteousness, for the right hand and the left.” Just saying these verses so you can refer it. Another verse where we see the apostle James talks about the word of truth, which is James, chapter 1, verses 18. “Out of the exercise of his will, he brought us forth by the word of truth.” It all refers to the gospel that the apostles talk about. Another verse is 2 Timothy, chapter 2, verses 15, where Paul talks about the word of truth. “Be diligent to present yourself approved to God as a workman, who does not need to be ashamed, accurately handling the word of truth, or accurately handling the gospel.” And then Jesus talks about it. John, chapter 17, verses 17, where when Jesus prays to God the Father, he uses that word in John, chapter 17, verses 17. Jesus says, “Sanctify them in the truth; your word is truth,” or “Your word is the gospel.” So when Jesus prays, he says, “Sanctify them in the truth; your word is truth.” So this is the truth. This is the word that sanctifies us, that makes us holy. The gospel makes us holy, in other words. And that is why Jesus, when he prays to God the Father, we know that a complete chapter, John 17, talks about Jesus’ prayer, prayer of Jesus. And in verse 17, Jesus asks God, Jesus asks his father to sanctify the church, sanctify the people of God in the truth, sanctify the people of God in the gospel. Because, and that’s why he says, “The reason is because your word, or the gospel, is the truth.” That’s the only, or the single source of truth, is what Jesus says. So these are the references where we see the word of truth. So what is this gospel? That we talk a lot about the gospel. The gospel saves us. So we’re going to look at the word gospel in various contexts in the New Testament. First of all, the root word is uangalian. We have, some of us at least know about it, which evangelism comes from. Uangalian is the Greek word. And evangelism, the word evangelism, comes from that root Greek word. So if you look at the New Testament context of that word uangalian, or the New Testament context of the gospel, right back in first century, if you study the history of New Testament, if you study the history of the New Testament church, back in those days, the city battles with another city, right? In Greece or in Rome, there were a lot of cities. And the cities battle against each city, or each state battle against each, battle against each state. So remember that time, they didn’t have any technology. There was no radio, there was no TV, there was no internet. So when one city battled against a city in some place, how do the people know about whether who won or who lost? Always, there will be a messenger, okay? So one city will be battling against a city, and there will be a messenger who brings the news to the particular city, where the people will be looking forward to hear who won the battle. And when that messenger comes, either he will have a sad face, or he will have a happy face. So for example, in Greece, if a city was battling against a city in Greece, both cities are in Greece, and if they are in a war against each other, there will be a messenger who brings the result to this particular city, where people are looking forward to know the news. And if he has a happy face, that is called, that is the message of victory. And that they call uangalian, because that city has won against another city. And that’s, that’s the word that they call for that message is called uangalian. So it’s the message of victory, right? So a city wins against a city, and they call that particular message as uangalian. So that is the same context which the word uangalian, or the word gospel, is used in the New Testament. In gospels, when we use the word uangalian, it means the victory of Jesus over the power of Satan, or the victory of Jesus over the powers of evil, the conquering message of Jesus over the power of evils and darkness. So basically, the word uangalian, the word gospel means, it’s a royal announcement of God’s victory over Satan. It’s a royal announcement of the victory of God over the powers of darkness, over the powers of evil, over the powers of death. So that is the context that the word gospel is used in all four gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. And we will look at each of the verse, how the word gospel is used. So I hope you understand how this word, the gospel, came from, what is the origin of this word, the gospel. City, battle against a city, and there will be a messenger who brings that message of victory to the city who won. And when they see that happy face, he will be, he will be running from that place. When they see him from afar, they know seeing his face, seeing how he runs that, whether it’s a message of victory or a message of whether they lost or not. So if it’s a message of victory, they call it uangalian. That’s a message of victory. That’s a mess, that’s good news. In other words, it’s good news. It’s not, it’s not a bad news at all. So good news means it’s a news of victory. And in reference to the Bible, we use this word gospel as the message of victory of God over Satan and over the powers of darkness. Just for, just for your reference, it’s a news of victory. So now, we’re going to look at some of the verses where this word gospel is used. Matthew, chapter 4, verses 23. We all know these verses, but just want your attention to divert into those verses. Matthew, chapter 4, verses 23. Jesus was going throughout all Galilee, teaching in their synagogues and proclaiming the gospel of the kingdom. Here, so here, we see Jesus proclaiming the gospel of the kingdom. It’s a, it’s a good news of the kingdom. And what is the good news of the kingdom? That the kingdom of God has arrived in the world through the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. Or Jesus brought the good news of victory from heaven. It was in heaven. It was a mystery, as Paul says. It was in the kingdom. It was back in heaven. No one in the world knew about it. But when Jesus, when all the Trinity, when all the people in the Trinity, God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, they were in one, in unity, and they took the decision to send Jesus Christ into this world. Jesus brought that kingdom into this world. So the gospel of the kingdom is the royal announcement that Jesus has brought to the world, which is the news of victory. The kingdom has arrived. Now, it’s not just in heaven, but the kingdom has arrived into this world through Jesus Christ. That is the gospel of the kingdom. That is the good news of the kingdom. In other words, Mark, chapter 1, verses 15, where Jesus talks about a gospel, and he asks about, asks for a response from the people whom he is talking to. Mark, chapter 1, verse 15, and saying, “The time is fulfilled, and the kingdom of God is at hand. Repent and believe in the gospel.” Again, we see the word gospel of the kingdom, because the kingdom is at hand. As I said before, the kingdom is near. Kingdom is not just in heaven. Now, the kingdom is among you, which is the kingdom of Jesus Christ. Or Jesus Christ has brought the kingdom from heaven into the world, and the time is fulfilled. Now is the time of salvation. Now is the time to repent. And that’s why Jesus says, “The time is fulfilled, and the kingdom of God is at hand. It is not far, now it is near. Now it is near you, now it is among you, who, which is me. I am the kingdom. Jesus Christ has brought the kingdom from heaven, and he asked for a response. And the response is repent and believe in the gospel. So since the kingdom is at hand, since the kingdom of God is near you, now it is time for your response. And your response is to repent and believe in the gospel.” Another verse, Luke, chapter 4, verses 18 and 19, where we see gospel used in another context. Luke, chapter 4, verses 18 and 19, where Jesus says, “The Spirit of the Lord,” we know it’s a quotation from Isaiah, “The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to proclaim release to the captives and recovery of sight to the blind, to set free those who are oppressed, and to proclaim the favorable year of the Lord.” Gospel to the poor, or gospel to the captives, gospel to the blind, gospel to the oppressed. So who is this gospel for? To whom is this gossip gospel being applied? Here, we see around four categories. The gospel is to the poor, gospel is to the broken-hearted, gospel is to the captives and the blind, and gospel is to the oppressed. Another verse to always note, gospel applies to all categories, every category of people in this world. It is not just for one certain section of people, but gospel is to be applied to every category of people, every section of people, no matter what tribe you are, no matter what caste, no matter what religion you are, no matter which section of, which section of, whether it’s financial or any section that you can name in this world, gospel applies to every section in this world. That is why Jesus says, “He has come to preach gospel to the poor, good news of victory to the poor, to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim freedom or liberty to the captives, recovery of sight to the blind, and to set at liberty to those who are oppressed.” All these sections of people have freedom in Jesus Christ when they believe in the gospel, when they repent of their sins. And when they believe in the gospel, they have liberty, they have healing, they have recovery of sight to the blind, not just in a physical sense, but in a spiritual sense also. This, we should take this verse. Not just in a physical sense, but in a spiritual sense, it liberates us. We are captives. We were captives in sin. We were dead in nonsense and trespasses. But when Jesus Christ came into this world, he proclaimed liberty to the captives, recovery of sight to those who are blind. We were blind in our sins, right? And Jesus gave us sight. We were oppressed in our sins, and Jesus gave liberty to those, to us when we repented and believed in the gospel. Acts 8, verses 12, another verse where we see the gospel. Acts 8, 12. So it’s not just Jesus who proclaimed the gospel, but the apostles also preached the gospel. Acts 8, 12. When they believed Philip preaching the good news about the kingdom of God. So here, they preached the kingdom of God, or the gospel of the kingdom. Again, we see when it comes to Acts, not just in Matthew and Mark, but when it comes to Acts, we see, when they believed Philip preaching the good news, Philip was preaching the good news about the kingdom of God and the name of Jesus Christ. They were being baptized, men and women alike. So when gospel, which was preached in the early church, in the first-century church, the response was, they believed in the gospel, they repented of their sins, and they were baptized, men and women, no matter of the gender, men and women alike, all of them baptized when they heard the gospel. So that was the response of the early church, of the first-century church. Next, Acts 20, 24. Another verse that we see, the same word gospel. “But I do not consider my life of any account as dear to myself, so that I may finish my course and the ministry which I receive from the Lord Jesus Christ, to testify solemnly of the gospel of the grace of God.” So here, we see gospel as the gospel of the grace of God. Gospel of the grace of God. Paul is talking about the gospel of the grace of God. That is what Luke is writing about. So when Paul received from the Lord Jesus directly the gospel, the good news Paul received directly on the way to Damascus, he says, “To testify solemnly of the gospel,” his responsibility, his duty, his responsibility is to preach the same gospel to both Jews and Gentiles. So he preaches the gospel of the grace of God. And what is this gospel of the grace of God? By grace alone, you are saved. We see in Ephesians, chapter 2, verses 8, right? By grace alone, you are saved, through faith alone. And it is not of yourselves, but it is a gift of God. And that is the gospel of the grace of God. It is by grace that you are saved, through faith. And it is not by your works, but it is a gift of, a gift of God. And that is the gospel of the grace of God. Romans, chapter 1, verses 1. Romans, chapter 1, verses 1. Again, “Paul, a born servant of Christ Jesus, called as an apostle, set apart for the gospel of God.” That’s what we see. Set apart for the gospel of God. So Paul is set apart, or separated, in another version, separated to the gospel of God. So what is Paul separated as? He separated, or who is Paul separated as? He separated as a born servant. He’s a slave of Jesus Christ, or a doulos. And he’s called to be an apostle. And what is his duty? His duty is to preach the gospel of God. And that is why Paul says, “He set apart for the gospel of God.” Are they the same chapter? We see in verse 16 of Romans 1. Another definition for gospel. “For I am not ashamed of the gospel; for it is the power of God for salvation.” So another definition you can give, the gospel of the power of God. So the power of God is manifested when the gospel is being preached. So the gospel of the power of God. And what does that power do? That power of God is salvation to everyone who believes, no matter what tribe you are, caste you are, no matter whether you are Jew or Greek. The power of God is manifested in, through the gospel, and it results in the salvation of people. Once again, I want to say, the power of God is manifested through the gospel, and that power of God results in the salvation of all people who believe in the gospel. And that is why Paul says, he’s not ashamed of it. Because, why is he not ashamed? That is the reason what he gives. He’s not ashamed because it is the power of God to salvation. If it is not, if it was not a power of God, if it doesn’t result in salvation, probably, he would have been shameful of the gospel. But the gospel has a power to transform people, and that is what Paul wants to mention here. He’s not ashamed because it is the power of God to salvation for everyone who believes. If it, if you don’t select to believe, if you don’t believe in this gospel, the power won’t be manifested. But if you select to believe, if you choose to believe in this gospel, in the good news of victory of Jesus over the powers of darkness and evil, remember, this power of God will be manifested in you, and that power of God will result in your salvation from evil. Again, 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, a verse that we all know about, where Paul defines and explains what the gospel is. 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verses 1 to 4, where he says, “Now I make known to you, brother, in the gospel which I preach to you, which you also received, in which also you stand, by which you are saved.” And then, from 3 onwards, he explains, “Christ died for our sins according to the scriptures; he was buried; he was raised on the third day according to the scriptures; then he appeared to Cephas and then to the twelve.” So what is this gospel Paul is talking about? The gospel is about the death of Jesus Christ and the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Christ died for our sins. He was buried. He was raised on the third day according to the scriptures. This is the gospel that I preach to you. He’s talking to the church of Corinth. So gospel here is the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ, with the death and burial and resurrection of Jesus Christ. And after resurrection, he appeared to Cephas and the twelve, and then he was ascended into the heavens. 2 Corinthians 4, for there, we see a particular term about the gospel. 2 Corinthians 4, 4 talks about, “In whose case the God of this world has blinded the minds of the unbelieving, so that they might not see the light of the gospel of the glory of Christ,” right? Or in other words, the gospel of the glory of Christ. And then, he gives a definition for who Christ is, who is the image of God. Or in other words, the gospel of the glory of the image of God. God, in his image, created each one of us, right? So the gospel manifests in us, or through us, when we believe in the gospel. But if you do not believe, then the power cannot be manifested, as I said before. Remember, in the world, all those who are living in the world, we all were part of that particular set of people, where we were dead in our sins and trespasses. Because the God of this age has, God of this age had blinded our eyes, because we couldn’t believe. But then, Jesus Christ came into this world, and the Spirit regenerated each one of us. And through that light of the gospel, we came to know about this glory of Jesus Christ, the image of God. The very image of God, Jesus Christ, came into this world and shone the, and he shone the light of God to us when we were in darkness. So that’s why Paul says, “So they might not see it.” Or the people in this world, the unbelieving people of this world are blinded by Satan, are blinded by the God of this age, because, so that they may not see. Since they are blinded, they cannot see the light of the gospel of the glory of Jesus Christ. That glory shines. So if you need to really see that glory, you need to believe in this gospel. If you do not believe in this gospel, you could not see the shining glory of Jesus Christ. And that is what Paul wants to mention here. He says, “The gospel of the glory of Christ.” This glory gives us light when we are in darkness. And when we choose to believe in this gospel, we are taken from this darkness to this shining light of Jesus Christ. And the glory of God is manifested through our lives when we choose to believe in the gospel. 2 Timothy, chapter 2, 8. Remember, Jesus Christ risen from the dead, descendant of David, according to my gospel. So here, gospel is the news about the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Remember, Jesus Christ. He gives an explanatory statement there. Remember, Jesus Christ, according to my gospel. But rather, he said, “Remember, Jesus Christ, risen from the dead, descendant of David.” Or in other words, this is the gospel of a king. This is the gospel of King Jesus Christ. That’s why he says, descendant of David. David was a king, right? This is the gospel of a king. This is the gospel of the King Jesus Christ, who rose from the dead, who was resurrected from the dead. So that is the context in which Paul writes to Timothy. Remember, Jesus Christ, risen from the dead, descendant of David, according to my gospel. Or this is a kingship gospel, or a gospel of a king. Kingship gospel. Remember, always remember, 2 Timothy 2, verses 8, a great definition for the gospel, kingship gospel, or gospel about a king. Romans, chapter 2, verses 16. There, we see another term which Paul uses. Romans, chapter 2, verses 16, where Paul says, “On the day when, according to my gospel, God will judge the secrets of men through Christ Jesus.” Or this is a gospel of judgment. So how can a good news be a judgment? It can be a gospel of judgment when you do not believe. So this gospel is a gospel of judgment too. This is not just a good news of victory, but it’s a good news of judgment to those who don’t believe. It’s not about those who believe, but it’s the gospel of judgment to those who do not believe in Jesus Christ. And that is why Paul says, “On the day when, according to my gospel, God will judge the secrets of men through Jesus Christ.” So according to, it is used in the context when he talks to the Jews, that there is no speciality or partiality to just Jews. That is the context which Paul is talking about. And according to the gospel which Paul preached, remember, God will judge each man by Jesus Christ, according to the gospel, according to what is being revealed to the gospel. So this is the gospel of judgment also. If you choose not to believe in Jesus Christ, God will judge you. So that is the gospel of judgment. And finally, we come to two verses. 2 Corinthians, chapter 2, verses 12, where Paul says, “Now I came to throw us for the gospel of Christ.” This is the gospel of Jesus Christ. Or preach Christ’s gospel, and a door was opened to me by the Lord. The same way, Paul uses in Galatians, chapter 1, verses 7, which is really not another, “Only there are some who are disturbing you and want to distort the gospel of Christ.” So this is the gospel of his, of God’s only begotten son, Jesus Christ. So I gave you many classifications. Each of these verses need a lot of explanation, but I just want to run through these verses. First, we saw Matthew, chapter 4, verses 23. It is the gospel of kingdom. The gospel which is being preached in, through the scriptures is the gospel of kingdom, where the kingdom of God has arrived to this world through Jesus Christ. Mark 1, 15, it’s the gospel of God. God has chosen to reveal himself through the gospel. Luke 4, 18 and 19. Gospel is for every section of people in this world. It applies to the poor. It applies to the blind. It applies to the broken-hearted. Every single section of this world, the gospel is being applied. Acts 8, 12, again, gospel of the kingdom. Acts 20, 24, it’s the gospel of grace, where grace is being revealed when you choose to believe in Jesus Christ. By grace alone, you are saved. And it is not a work of yourselves. It is through faith alone, which is a gift of God. Romans 1, 1 to 4, it’s a gospel of God. Romans 1, 16, the gospel of the power of God. Romans 1:16, the gospel of the power of God. As I said, the power of God is manifested when we choose to believe in Jesus Christ and that power results in salvation. 1 Corinthians 15:3-5, the gospel about the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ where Paul talks about the death, the burial and the resurrection of Jesus Christ. 2 Corinthians 4:4, this is the gospel of the glory of Christ. You were in darkness, we were all in darkness. But when we were in darkness, Jesus Christ, the true light of salvation, chose to come to this world as per the will of God and he showed the glory of God to each one of us. And when we choose to believe in the gospel, we see the true light of Jesus and we are taken from the zone of darkness, the kingdom of darkness, to the kingdom of light, who is Jesus Christ himself. And we are privileged to see the glory of God. Right now, we are not redeemed in our bodies, but when we are redeemed in our bodies, we're going to get that glorified bodies and we're going to be, God is going to reveal the full glory when we are taken up, when he comes again. So we are privileged to receive this glory when we choose to believe in the gospel. 2 Timothy 2:8, it's a kingship gospel, as I said, gospel about a king. That's why Paul says descendant of David. Jesus is a descendant of David. Romans 2:16, this is a gospel of judgment. If you choose not to believe in this gospel, you will be judged through Jesus Christ. And 2 Corinthians 2:12 and Galatians 1:7, this is the gospel of Jesus Christ himself, the person and the work of Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ chose to reveal himself through this gospel and it is the gospel about Jesus Christ himself, the person and the work of Jesus Christ. So these are the different classifications of the gospel that we see in New Testament. There are a lot of other verses because of the lack of time. There are around 30 to 35 verses that talk about the word uangalian or the word gospel. I just chose 10 or 12 for the sake of lack of time. And now we come back to Colossians, chapter 1, verses 6. Romans 5, we see gospel of peace where Jesus brought peace so that we could be reconciled back to God. So these are the various categories of the gospel. So if you could go through these verses when you go back home and study the word gospel itself, you'll get a clear idea about what the gospel is. Whatever gospel that we hear right now through conventions and all, a very distorted way that the gospel is being presented unfortunately. But remember, the gospel that we, the verses that I mentioned, talks about what really the gospel is. So there in Colossians, chapter 1, verses 6, Paul says, "which has come to you, just as in all the world also, it is constantly bearing fruit and increasing, even as it has been doing in you since the day you heard of it and understood the grace of God in truth." So here Paul is talking about an application of the gospel. So what does this gospel bring forth? When he talks to the church of Colossae, he says, "this gospel has come to you." And how did the gospel come? Through Epaphras. Epaphras preached the gospel of God. Epaphras taught the gospel of Jesus Christ to this church of Colossae and that's how this church of Colossae believed in the gospel. And then Paul says, "just as in all the world also," next he talks about an application of the gospel. Constantly bearing fruit and increasing. Constantly bearing, we have this theme, right? Fruitfulness for this year, right? So this gospel should bear fruit constantly. I like that word, constantly. But constantly, consistently you should bear fruit. That's why Paul says, "this church of Colossae has been constantly bearing fruit." They didn't just brood in the initial phase when the gospel was preached and then they didn't go through a dark period, but rather they're, and he's rejoicing in God. Paul is rejoicing in God because this gospel that Epaphras preached and taught, this gospel has resulted in fruitfulness of the church of Colossae. And that is, so remember, this is a model church for us when it comes to fruitfulness because the gospel was preached, the gospel was taught systematically. They are disciples of Jesus Christ now and this church of Colossae is constantly bearing fruit and it's increasing too. So that's why I like that phrase. Also, it is constantly bearing fruit and increasing. And then Paul says, "even as it has been doing in you also since the day you heard of it." So the very moment they heard the gospel, from then on, they have been bearing fruit for the Lord. They have been constantly bearing fruit for the Lord. So as a church, remember, let's look to this church of Colossae and let's consider this church as a model church. We all have heard the gospel multiple times, every day, whether in church or YouTube or Facebook or Instagram or wherever, we all see the gospel being preached. It can be distorted gospel, it can be the true gospel, whatever that is. But remember, this is, the scripture is the basis for the gospel. The scripture is the foundation that we need to look into for what the gospel is. Understand what the gospel is and this gospel should transform our hearts. Not just our hearts, it should transform our intellect, it should transform our will, it should transform our emotions and it should result in a right walk with the Lord. And that is what bearing fruit means. Bearing fruit means in the intellect, in your emotions, in your human will and also it should result in right walking with the Lord. Right walk with God. We are all righteous in the sight of God through Jesus Christ, but that's not just enough. As James says, faith results in good works too, right? Otherwise, it's a dead faith. So this faith should result in good works. And how does this good work happen? By the power of the Holy Spirit. If you let the power of the Holy Spirit transform you every day of your life, then you can have a right walk with God. You can bear the fruit for Jesus Christ. The fruit of the Spirit is, we see the nine characteristics. All these characteristics you can produce by the power of the Holy Spirit. So you should enable, you should let the power of the Holy Spirit work inside you, submit and surrender to this power so you can bear fruit constantly. So this gospel, remember, bears fruit. It is an application that Paul is talking about. This gospel bears fruit, this gospel transforms lives. So this church of Colossae, their lives have been transformed by the gospel of Jesus Christ. They were worshiping idols, this lot of false teaching going on in this church of Colossae. They are windled, they are shaken by this gospel. Still in the midst of all this happening, we saw the various false teachings in the first class. In the first class, we were talking about what are the false, there were around 12 to 14 false teachings going on in this church of Colossae. But even in the midst, they're constantly bearing fruit and increase. Even in this midst of darkness, even in the midst of false teachings, the church of Colossae has chosen to bear fruit for the Lord. So remember, gospel bears fruit, gospel transforms life and gospel bears love for our fellow saints. That's what Paul says in verse 4. And the love which you have for all the saints. The gospel has, gospel bear fruit and the first, as we know, the first fruit of the spirit is love. That love has been reproduced by the church of Colossae. The love of God, the love that Jesus Christ showed for them at the cross, they are bearing. So here the love, the word is used sagape itself. So that unconditional love, they have chosen to bear or show this unconditional love for all the fellow saints. In John, chapter, grace and truth, John, chapter 1, verses 17, we all know that verse, I just want to read it. John, chapter 1, verses 17, where Apostle John says, "for the law was given through Moses, but grace and truth were realized through Jesus Christ." So only you can realize this true grace and truth through Jesus Christ. So that has a transformative effect on each one of us. When we choose to believe, when we choose to repent and believe in the gospel, this gospel can transform our sight, gospel can transform our thoughts, gospel can transform our deeds, gospel can transform our actions, whatever that is. This has a transformative power. So remember, this transformative power of the gospel has an effect on our sight, in our deeds, in our thoughts and in our actions. And when it comes to the church of Colossae, this gospel that Paul preached helped them to continue in the truth. And that is why they could bear fruit consistently. If you do not continue yourself in the truth or in the truth of Jesus Christ, then you cannot bear fruit for the Lord. So remember, this church of Colossae was walking or they were walking in the truth of the Lord. They understood the truth from Epaphras. They listened to the truth, they understood the truth and they chose to obey the truth. So that is the action that we all need to take, not just listening, not just hearing the truth, but rather we should have a transformative, we should allow the Holy Spirit to transform each one of us. And that is what the church of Colossae did. They enabled the spirit to work inside them. They enabled the spirit to let them walk according to the spirit, according to the will of the spirit, according to the ways of the spirit. And that is why they are constantly bearing fruit and increasing. It's not just constantly bearing fruit, but increasing. This verse, I think Genesis 1:28, right? God talks to Adam and Eve. Be fruitful and multiply. Be fruitful and multiply. In this context, Paul is saying they're bearing fruit for the Lord and multiplying or increasing. In Adam and Eve, in a physical sense, God talked to Adam and Eve, go bear fruit and multiply. But here in a church context, in a spiritual context, they're bearing fruit of the spirit for the Lord and they're increasing in number too. So not just the fruit is increasing, but they're increasing in number. A lot more people are believing in the gospel and the church membership is increasing when it comes to the church of Colossae. So all this is because they choose, they choose to believe or they chose to believe in the gospel. They let the Holy Spirit work inside them and the Holy Spirit has a transformative effect on them. Jesus talks about this, as we know, John, chapter 15, verses 16, where Jesus talks about bearing fruit. John 15:16, you did not choose me, but I chose you and appointed you that you would go bear fruit, that your fruit would remain and whatever you ask of the Father in my name, he may give it to you. So it is not we, it is not that we chose Jesus, but rather God chose us. God appointed each one of us. So when God appointed each one of us, our responsibility which God says is to go bear fruit. Because I have chosen you, because God has chosen each one of you, your responsibility, your duty is to go and bear fruit. And then what should, what should that fruit do? That fruit should remain. Go and bear fruit, not for a while. The same word consistent should be used here, in another way, in another context, it's used by Jesus himself. That fruit would remain, that fruit should remain. When you go and bear fruit, that fruit is forever till your death or till Christ comes again. That fruit should be consistent, you should consistently bear fruit and that fruit should remain. And then Jesus says, "whatever you ask of the Father in my name, he may give it to you." According to the will of God, if you ask anything of the Father, the Father will grant to you. Romans, chapter 1, verses 13. Quickly, I'm going, Romans, chapter 1, verses 13, where Paul says, "I do not want you to be unaware, brother, that I plan to come to you so that I may obtain some fruit among you also, even as among the rest of Gentiles." So Paul is expecting fruit from the church at Rome when he writes to the Romans. They don't have any fruit, they're not bearing any fruit. Any fruit, some fruit, please bear. He's requesting to the church at Rome. God should not talk like that when it comes to us. So remember, always bear fruit consistently. And Philippians, chapter 1, verses 11, a particular fruit is being mentioned by Paul there. Philippians, chapter 1, verses 11, "where having been filled with the fruit of righteousness." Are we bearing the fruit of righteousness? Philippi church, when Paul is saying, Paul is thanking the Lord for, because they have been filled with the fruit of righteousness and that comes through Jesus Christ to the glory and praise of God. So remember, another responsibility that the church has to bear the fruit of righteousness, not just walk righteously in the sight of God, but bear that fruit of righteousness. Do righteous deeds to your fellow saints. Be the righteousness of God himself when it comes to the world. When you face, whether it's your workplace or schools or colleges, be the fruit of righteousness. Let them see the righteousness of Jesus Christ through your life. And that is how you bear the fruit of righteousness. And finally, I want to go to Matthew, chapter 3, verses 8. Consistent fruit that we should bear. Matthew, chapter 3, verses 8, where Matthew talks about a fruit. Therefore, bear fruit in keeping with repentance. So Matthew says, "bear the fruit of repentance." That is a consistent fruit that we all need to bear, always have a repentant heart. We were talking Friday in Youth Impact about repentance. Always bear the fruit of repentance. Unless you repent, then your life is going wayward, right? Because you have to come back from, every time you repent, you come close to God. You are reconciled back to God every time. But when you don't repent, you're going far from the presence of God. You're going far from the sight of God. You're going far from God himself. So remember, when you bear fruit with repentance, when you come with a repentant heart, you're close to God, you are one with God and you bear fruit because Christ is in you. You're in a relationship with God. So have that relational repentance every day. Of course, when we believed in the gospel, we repented and believed in the gospel of Jesus Christ. But that repentance should happen every day. So remember, we talked about the different contexts which gospel is being used in the New Testament. We saw that gospel is the royal announcement of the Kingdom of God arriving to this world through Jesus Christ. And when we repent and believe in that gospel, it results in salvation. That power of God is manifested in the gospel and we saw the gospel of kingdom, God, poor, grace, power of God, death and resurrection, glory, judgment. All these contexts gospel is being used in the New Testament. Remember to bear fruit for the Lord. Let this gospel transform each one of us and let us, help us to bear fruit for the Lord. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful morning given us, Lord God. Thank you for helping us to learn from your word. Thank you for the gospel, Lord God. Thank you, Lord, for electing us before the foundations of the world. Thank you for saving us. Let this gospel have a transforming effect in us and let it produce salvation through us, Lord God. Let us walk righteously in your sight, Lord. Let us bear fruit in effect to repent, in relation to repentance. Help us to have a repentant heart every day, Lord. Thank you for the gospel again, Lord. Bless the service in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.